Be through regulations, through the organizations themselves that retain the bands or the bands themselves. And so they, they need to self-police this because of the freedom of expression. We, we as a government really are very limited in what we can do or say as far as it's.
Mr. Penn, anything else?
Not, not regarding this matter.
Okay, Mr. Woods?
Um, just a quick question. When it comes to this too, wouldn't we also say that the owner of the parade permit would probably need to, to police it closer as well?
Yes. I mean, really, if there's concerns about this type of behavior, that's where it needs to be addressed is through the organizations, through the band themselves and, or whoever the dance groups are on what's acceptable, not acceptable, but as a government, it's, we can't really enforce a lot of this stuff.
Yeah. So expressing it would be the parade permit holders, the different organizations, maybe direct it towards them and, you know, theoretically if something inappropriate is going on or somebody feels something's inappropriate, that gets pulled and maybe there's a situation that can be rectified at that point.
That's correct. It should be self-policed.
Anybody else?
Uh, I just wanted to remind the council that, uh, we've been down this rabbit hole before. If y'all don't remember, uh, the first person to address this was Hazel Fanyeh, uh, from the Mobile County Public School System when she was a school board commissioner. Uh, and in that, uh, she addressed, uh, the dance style, uh, the shake style. If you guys remember at that time, there was a, a song on the radio, uh, that was extremely provocative that the bands would dance to. Uh, secondly, the city at that time took up the stance with dance teams that they had to follow the same position that school system did. Uh, now we have several multiple new dance teams in town with different leaders that aren't familiar with those rules. And I think that we just need to reissue those rules to those new dance teams that are unfamiliar with them. Uh, like I said, we've been down this rabbit hole before. I can't remember the year, but it was addressed and brought to us from county commissioner, uh, Hazel Fanyeh, uh, who in turn enforced it in the school system and asked that we pass the same rules on to the other dance teams.
All right. Sounds good. Um, go ahead, Lana.
Ordinance is held over. Thirty-four, zero, zero, four, ordinance to amend Article Six of Chapter Thirty-four, Lodging Tax of the Code of the City of Mobile.
Okay.
I am, I am okay with this. Uh, I went through the, uh, new layout with the administration yesterday. Uh, uh, the, I think the, in, in providing this money, uh, and not stacking it on top of the already, uh, debt service that we're going to the bond issue, it does allow us to use that little soft capital, even though it's not very much. It's two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in the first year, eight hundred and thirteen thousand in the second year. And I just can't remember all of them off the top of my head right now, but it allows, it frees up some money that can go towards capital and not towards the debt service of the arena. Uh, the only sad part of this is that the city doesn't see any money from the TID like I, like I told y'all before, it's just, it's just that. The other thing is, is that it doesn't have a whole lot of wiggle, it doesn't have any wiggle room, period, which is something that the next administration and the council is just gonna have to watch in case there's anything that may happen to the economy that, uh, changes the way that we do things.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Reynolds?
This has to be amended, correct? Or are we accepting the original version?
It has to be amended.
Do we, do we have an amended copy or?
Well, I guess the proper question to ask is can we just substitute the?
Yeah.
It would be easier to substitute it.
Yeah. Why don't we get the substituted copy for the meeting in that way?
The court has it.
The court has it. Okay. So we just put that on the agenda?
Yes, I do.
So how will that be handled then?
Just move to substitute.
Move to substitute?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
The substitution doesn't require any, uh, reading time for the general public, does it?
Anybody else? All right.
Fifty, zero, zero, five, determine whether the Mobile Tourism Improvement District should be continued, modified, or terminated.
Any questions, concerns about this? All right.
Resolution is held over, zero, one, four, thirty-eight, authorized agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation for I-ten Mobile River Bridge and Bayway Project.
Madam Vice President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Reynolds?
I read through this resolution. I guess this is sort of a standard thing that happens that maybe it's just, you know, it's not something I've dealt with, but it does identify some obligations of the city and it, uh, and it references some aesthetic guidelines that the city would have to adhere to and be responsible for in some future management agreement. And I, I don't know what those aesthetic guidelines are. They're not outlined in any of this.
Uh, good morning. So this is, it's an agreement, uh, primarily the big takeaway is in it is that we pay the, the, the lighting bill for the lights on the bridge and on the interstate, much like we already do on I-65, I-10, and the Cockburn Bridge. That's a light bill that we do. The state just does not, they'll build, they'll build the facilities, but then they turn over the maintenance and, and light bill over to the, uh, over to the municipalities or the county that they're in. And then the, the other piece in there that's, that's pretty important is the, uh, the bridge will have what's called a belvedere, the lookout tower, observation deck up there. And it's in, within the agreement is just the terms for us to enter into a future agreement with them where we work out the nuts and bolts of how many, you know, the security that's gonna be there, hours of operation. Uh, and so, so ALDOT does, does believe or expects the city to operate that, that belvedere. Uh, it's just the terms of that have to be worked out in a separate agreement that'll come at a later date.
And then the aesthetic guidelines, it just says attached here too is exhibit A.
Yeah, I, I would say those are gonna be, that's gonna be the aesthetics of just incorporating the bridge, the lighting, the uplighting on the, on the bridge. And then we can get renderings, I'm sure we've got renderings that we can probably make available at some point.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's important. I mean, this isn't gonna come back before us.
Yeah.
And, you know, that, that if we have a complete, you know, exhibit, so we know what to expect because when we do, when this bridge does happen, the city of Mobile is obligating itself to, you know, in support of it, or to, and I think it's, you know, I don't object to it, it just, I think we, we should know what we're obligating ourselves to.
Sure, sure. And their work, so you know, their design team is working with us for the, not just the bridge, but the, the ground improvements, the connecting roads, making sure that we're following the street lights that we've got on Broad Street or following the acorn lights where appropriate. So, uh, that's, I mean, in general, that's what they're, that's what they're following. But some of that stuff is still, is a, is a design work in progress with working out those details of all those streets. So we're trying to get away from the aluminum, you know, Cobra Head Interstate Lights on downtown streets. We're wanting to make sure they go back with the acorn lights and/or like equivalent to what we've got on, uh, on Broad Street, the decorative mast, mast arm, traffic signal poles. So it's, everything that they're doing and designing is in following and keeping with the theme of the aesthetics that already exist downtown.
Can you help me understand the design, build process? That's not something that I'm really familiar with.
I, I, I'll take a stab at it. This is a complicated project as you, as you could imagine. So, uh, it's just a lot of iterations back and, back and forth. I mean, with a project of this scale and this dollar amount, uh, those iterations back and, back and forth can mean millions and millions of dollars, uh, you know. So ALDOT's kind of doing it concurrently because a project like this is gonna take so long, you can't just completely design it and then go through a traditional bid process and just wait, you know, like, like we would do on our projects that may only have a year or two-year lifecycle to it. Some of the changes and the codes and the technologies, I mean, it changes as it goes. So it's a process that's intended to get the companies that can physically build it and the engineers that can physically design it much closer together and utilize both entities' abilities and knowledge of how to best construct the structure at the most affordable price.
Anybody else?
It's much like if you were building, building a house, you know, without, without a set of plans and you're working back and forth with your contractor and saying, I want a slab that's, you know, ten by twenty and I want these walls, but you know, this is on a, you know, three billion dollar structure. So, uh, a little, a little bit more involved in that.
Can you tell me just the status? Where, where are we at with this new bridge starting?
Uh, I'm not gonna be your best person to tell you that. I mean, I can get ALDOT in here and give, give you updates. I can tell you they are, uh, it's, it's iterations back and forth. I think we're gonna hear something a little later in the summer, uh, you know, about that. But I mean, they're going back and forth, uh, you know, with their, with their, with their bonds, with the grants they've already got, with the designers. So they've got two or three big plates that are spinning, uh, that have to all kind of line up before they actually pull the trigger. But, uh, I, I know they're, they're working real hard to get it to, get it to a place where they can, they can, they can go. Now, this is a step, I mean, this agreement is one of the steps because they're trying to get agreements in place, you know, with entities like us and likely across the bay as well.
So Spanish Board and other municipalities will have a similar agreement or arrangement?
Yeah, if it touches down in their cities, they should have a similar, similar arrangement. They're working with, with us on, uh, like their construction lay-down yards where they're trying to get, uh, construction trailers, you know, or construction trailer complexes, not just one single trailer. So they are working with us trying to get that worked out right now. Uh, so they're, I mean, they're, they're slowing down from, from my perspective of what I'm seeing them, what I'm seeing coming out of them.
I ask a lot of these questions because we have the bridge's biggest advocate in the room with us today. And, you know, and after, you know, November, he's not gonna be in the room with us necessarily day to day, and, um, I think it's important that, you know, we do what we can to try to get it going. I understand this is part of the process, but I'd like to see the exhibit A possible.
Sure, sure. We're gonna get that for you.
Madam Vice President, Mr. Reynolds, I was twenty-eight when I first heard about this bridge. I'm fifty-five now. I'm pretty sure that the biggest advocate was a little bit younger than I am when he first heard about the bridge. And I don't wanna tell his age now, just a point of reference, so you know.
Mr. Davis?
Yeah, I, I'm happy to see this item, uh, on the agenda. I think we need to be moving ahead as quickly as we can on everything having to do with the bridge. In my personal opinion, the new arena, the airport pale in comparison to the, to projects that, uh, are important to the future of the city of Mobile to the bridge. The bridge is far more important than anything else we have going on because it's so critically important to the port, which drives our economy. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy to see this item on here. I think we need to continue to keep our eyes focused on that bridge and getting it done as quickly as we can possibly get it done with all the partners we have to deal with. Thank you.
And I think the congregation all said amen. Okay.
Zero, one, four, thirty-nine, authorized intergovernmental agreement with Mobile County Commission for the Mobile Arena Project.
Madam Vice President.
Mr. Woods?
Uh, Scott, can we, uh, let's just, obviously we've, we've got an amount here, we've got this intergovernmental agreement. Um, if the cards don't all work out, the game doesn't all work out, um, as far as, uh, of, of getting the, the county commission to come alongside us, um, for, for support, um, to, to apply to the cash stack, uh, we've, we've got measures in place to, to really, to move forward without having to accommodate, um, them deciding to work with us, I guess. Is that correct? Okay. And then, um, I guess obviously this is the second time we've taken a look at this. Um, uh, the conversations when it comes to the county commission, um, have we heard anything, um, as far as if they're gonna, you consider participating or when they would consider participating with us? Not really, I guess.
The answer that I have is that I know there's some discussion back and forth. I don't know what the number is. I think, uh, the most recent conversations were whether or not they will be able to provide dollars within our window or, or over a certain period of time. I think internally they're discussing anything between two years and ten years, what that looks like. We have gone back administratively and looked to make sure we can make the math work. I was going with their partnership, that's the most important thing. Um, once we get that, then we'll be able to follow through with, with the plan. But as of today, our cash stack works without that, certainly favorable with that, and we can make that work over the, over the period of time, be it two or ten years.
Gotcha. Yeah, and I, that's to me, um, you know, obviously what that timeframe looks like. I, I would hope that they would participate. Um, you know, we've participated over the past couple of years on several things and just recently, you know, the, um, partnership in, in my district as far as the parks. I, um, just wanted to touch base and just kind of see, I guess, where we are on that.
Yes, sir. We are hopeful that it will be successful. We believe it will be in some form.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Reynolds?
Because the terms of this likely would be different than what they are now, would it make sense to not pass this, just hold it off, um, keep it alive as the discussions unfold so that we're nimble enough to just modify it? Would y'all like to do that? Just hold it over and, or?
Until we know something definitively? Is that what you're saying?
It sort of stays in the spotlight a little bit, reappear, so we can revisit this topic, you know, in a matter of weeks, months, whatever it is, until we can, I think that's probably the best option for us.
Uh, Josh and Jim?
If, if there's not confidence, it doesn't sound like there's a whole lot of confidence that the terms of this deal are gonna be the terms of the deal, you know, based on their budgetary constraints and whatever else. I'd say we can keep it alive.
Hold it over two weeks.
Or, or, or how long will it be until there is a definitive answer one way or the other?
Let's give it thirty days. What do y'all think about that? Let's give it thirty days and revisit the, the topic and, and see where we're at.
With that, Scott, with that?
If we're gonna keep it, if we're gonna keep it on the front burner, we need to, we need to carry it over for short periods of time.
Okay.
Because if you put it, hold it over for thirty, thirty, if you hold it over for thirty days, you know, no one does anything until it.
Yeah, they're right. That's right. So you wanna hold it two weeks? I have no objection to that. What about you?
I think that's fair. I mean, I think that would give enough time to have conversations of, um, if they're gonna participate, at what level, and then over the course of what amount of time. And, um, again, I really hope that they do participate, uh, because I think it's not only a benefit for, um, you know, for the city of Mobile, but really as a county as a whole, um, that building's gonna be utilized, their county's gonna benefit from it, and, um, look forward to hearing what their participation looks like. Madam Vice President?
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
No, thank you. Um, just to the administration, I, I mean, we, we say in conversations, but our conversations?
Fruitful.
Yeah.
Fruitful and ongoing or are we stalled?
I can make a comment on that. I, I've spoken with Commissioner Doitt at length and he's all in. He's, he's, he's ready to go for this, it seems anyway. So, um, I, I think it'd be helpful if we all have conversations and try to, you know, lay out the need, but I don't, I don't know the status of anybody else's.
Anybody else?
What was the last conversation the administration had with the county?
I think the last conversation, I think it was around two weeks ago, they were gonna go into executive session, but we really haven't gotten a definitive answer out of the county. And so, um, you know, the, the question, the original ask was fifteen million. Um, there was talk about between seven point five to ten, and then they went into executive session and they can't really discuss with us what they talked about in executive session. Uh, but we were hoping they would get to ten is what we were, our hopes were.
Is it a timing issue or they haven't alluded to anything?
Well, one of the things that we're trying to, obviously the first two years are the critical years for the city of Mobile, so that's why they asked for the first two. That might not, from a budget standpoint, work with them, and so there was some discussion, I know, between the administration of the county and the administration of the city of stretching that out over ten years. And I don't know where we are with that, but that's, that's part of the conversations that are ongoing. But the, the agreement was sent over last week, Ricardo, to the, to the county, and we're just waiting for a response.
With the last amortization I saw, it wouldn't really hurt us if they came in in year three or four.
Any participation from the county would be welcome from us. Now, I mean, you know, we're, we're prepared to proceed, as Scott said, regardless, but, um, you know, it's been a longstanding, uh, thing that the city has participated in county projects and the county has participated in city projects.
Uh, you know, I, I was just asking, I don't know what the, what the hesitation was, if it was a timing issue as to when it would, the payment would start, is what I was thinking.
I think the timing and the cost, and I think they're working with their, their finance department to try to figure out how, what participation they may have.
Joel?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I, I think there are three good reasons for the county to participate in this project. The first reason is the one you just alluded to, is the fact that the city has participated in a number of projects that the county has brought forward, uh, and we've been a good partner with the county. The second thing is that this project will add revenue to the county because they will share in some of the revenue that, uh, some of the tax revenue that this project produces. And the third reason is that I like to always remind everybody is that almost half of the county's revenue comes from people who live inside the city of Mobile. That should never be forgotten. So I think there are three good reasons why the county ought to participate in this, and I, I hope to see them move forward on it soon. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, Madam Vice President?
Yes, sure.
I can't remember the number that we actually contributed to the Aquatic Center. What we did, but what was it? Wasn't that, wasn't that half of what they're asking for or something like that?
I think, I think they're in cost overruns, William, but the, um, we, we contributed a total of five million toward that soccer complex and Aquatic Center.
And, and there gonna be a second ask? Uh, weren't there rumors of?
There was already a second ask for another five million.
And, and did we participate in the second?
We've only done one five million dollar participation.
But we've considered a second participation in the second five million, right?
There, there was an ask.
I, I'm just making a point. Uh, I mean, there's an ask from one side that we didn't hesitate on participating in an aquatic center that serves basically the same function, tourism, additional dollars, bringing people to the city of Mobile, putting beds and, I mean, putting butts in seats and heads in beds, right, in tax dollars. I mean, I, I, I'm just reminding myself of what we did when we stepped up to the table, I mean, for something as five million dollars just on a gigantic swimming pool.
Yes, and, and, you know, we've had a history of participating in each other's projects. I mean, going all the way back to the Aquatic Center, to Top Golf, to West Mobile County Park, I mean, here recently, and then even the ankle monitoring. So we, we expect some participation from the county on this.
Anybody else? Mr. Reynolds?
Additional comment? I've heard in the media about, uh, the Civic Center not including a theater, and I think that was a decision, that was a tough decision for all of us, but it was one we had to make. And, but I, we didn't exclude that possibility in future, uh, development. I think there's a parcel of land that's set over on the south side that we have the full intention, it seems, to build a theater out over there. It's just not in the financial cards for us to do right now, and, and an investment from the, the county in, in this project certainly makes it more likely that that project will move forward sooner rather than later. Um, so those, those objections I, I hear in the media, you know, we certainly agree that we want a theater as well, it's just, it's not in the financial cards and partners like the county and others make those sort of things possible.
Mr. Davis?
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on what Mr. Reynolds said and appreciate him bringing that up. The, the, and you're absolutely right, we would all love to have a theater over there. But the fact of the matter wa, is, was that we could either have a new arena without a theater right now, or we could not have a new arena. The, the, those were the two choices. We had enough money to build an arena, but not enough money to build an arena and a theater. Hopefully we can build one later on down the road, but I'd be absolutely open to anyone who wants to provide the money for us to build a theater, or anybody out there asking for us to build a theater to tell us how we might build a theater.
Mr. Carroll?
Thank you. Um, Councilman member Joel Davis, uh, I've actually set up a meeting with the administration, what, two months ago, with an outside source that was willing to help fundraise, had a program to build a theater. It's a little bit smaller than what we're looking for, but the plans kept changing and they were adamant about getting it done. They were actually in the process of building a new theater out on, uh, Sage and Dolphin and that area at one point, but COVID hit and their plans changed. But now there's a chance for a better and newer opportunity if we could work out some details to help them see that plan through, plus see our plan through. Uh, we've had one conversation, maybe those conversations can continue over the next, uh, six months to see if it's feasible, possible.
Anybody else? Uh, Mr. Mayor?
So I think we're, um, we're all, over the last seven, seven years, I'll just say, have really had, um, opportunities to build all kinds of things, fix roads, more money into infrastructure than we've ever had. And, and really we got to a point where we could really afford to do the arena. I mean, we, we had paid down the legacy debt, you know, paying off the fire pension fund was within reach. So for the next five years, and I'm just saying this really more for the public benefit than yours because you understand this, but this next five years, it's tight. So if you were to go say, we're gonna build a theater, and you go borrow, we go borrow another hundred and twenty million dollars or whatever it would be, um, all you're doing is putting the city of Mobile from a financial standpoint with its back against the wall so that we have very little flexibility to address other things that we all want to address that are a lot less expensive. I mean, there are things that we want to do, such as the, uh, the animal shelter. There's additional things that, that we know that we can't address with CIP that are city-owned facilities, that there's not enough CIP money. So right now, we have the flexibility, uh, to do that, but about year four from now, if the plans were, were in place to do something with the theater, I think that the city is probably in a, in a financial situation to be able to absorb and, and really do a great job of, uh, addressing it at that time. That's my, um, not just my personal opinion, that's the, the opinion of some of our financial advisors and others that have looked at this. But, uh, I don't think there's anybody that's sitting in this room that doesn't want a theater. We just wanna be prudent about how we go about doing it.
Appreciate that, Mayor. I was just writing myself a note, at year five, we need to have already started beginning to look at the location, design, and all of those kinds of things so that when it's not as tight and when we are able to, then we can actually begin, you know, full force working on the theater.
You know, there is one other, I mean, we, we, we approached South Alabama about one, see if they wanted to build their theater here. They really want it on the campus. Uh, there, when you're a university, you have benefactors that will cough up, not cough up, but they will contribute, uh, money. For, for choice of words, but you know, I think they, they've had benefactors that'll give, you know, twenty or forty, fifty million dollars, uh, to accelerate that process. Anybody that wants to accelerate this process, if the county wants to accelerate this process, if they wanna give us fifty million dollars, we will move it forward, you know? Uh, but it's, to me, it's, it's kind of that simple.
Mr. Reynolds?
You, you would agree though that, uh, an investment of, say, ten or fifteen million dollars into this current project we have at the arena makes it more likely or possible that a theater could happen rather than not.
Yeah. I mean, it, it's, it's just less money that we have to, less money that we have to put in it that gives us, uh, and I'll say it increases our financial strength, okay? And somebody said, well, ten million dollars is not that much money. Well, it is a lot of money. Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on.
Zero, one, four, forty, authorized agreement with Wayland's Wildlife Services for nuisance beaver control.
Any, um, questions, concerns? This has been, um, a big story on, um, some of our TV stations.
It always is.
It's been interesting to see. Any, any questions? Comments?
How long we've been doing this?
I don't know, but it's been entertaining. Okay, go ahead.
Zero, one, four, forty-one, authorized amendment to agreement with GRW Engineers for the Mobile Area Stormwater Mapping and Resiliency Planning Project. Zero, eight, four, forty-two, and four, forty-three are approving purchase orders to Canon USA for digital scanning for municipal archives and to tactical electronics and military supply for underdoor cameras and video scope for MPD. Zero, nine, four, forty-four, allocate funds to recipients designated in the Helios Allocation Report.
Anybody want to speak to this? Since we had some questions last week.
What was the outcome of those, those questions?
I think, Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So ultimately, the outcome is that we talked to the judge who, who made the ask, but it wasn't specifically for opioid funds, and I looked at the letter that they sent. Those requests don't necessarily fall in the category for opioid funds, but however, as Chief Barber mentioned, we can easily, uh, talk to the contractors, the people who are suggested to getting funds and have them work with the courts. But the, the, the rub is, as Councilman Carroll mentioned, what you really need is somebody in the courtroom to, to make the connect. We're gonna have to talk through that process of making sure that people are actually connected to services, but those services have to be specifically tied to either opioid education, But those services have to be specifically tied to either opioid education, opioid prevention, or, you know, going after trafficking of some sort, which really doesn't happen in municipal court. But there is a there's a grouping of people, if it's dealing with opioid addiction, that we will be able to send off to these locations. The counseling aspect of it is something different that we'll have to deal with going forward with the courts otherwise. It needs to be dealt with, but I don't think it can be dealt with in the confines of the opioid monies.
Anybody else? Mr. Woods?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to say, I'm not taking away from the discussion or anything, but I'm I just want to say thank you to the Helios Alliance Group. I mean, that, I guess, about two years ago, whenever it first came in, or a year and three quarters ago, first came in, started learning about what Helios does and how they go and they allocate everything and and their plan, it's a more holistic approach versus just, you know, doling out. So I just want to say thank you to them. I'm very impressed with what they presented to us. You know, their their ability to not only determine where and where the need is and what the need is through their formula and their 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 way of doing it, but also allowing and and bringing in other people under the umbrella of of organizations to accomplish or maximize the the dollars that are provided for this. So I just want to point out that they've done a great job, and I really appreciate everything they've done to to get it. You know, whenever we first started talking about this, what was it, end of last year, on agenda? Getting it across the finish line was a big task, and I made a heavy pull, so I just want to say thank you to them.
Anybody else? It was a massive undertaking, so thank you very much for everything you did. And we look forward to seeing a lot of progress with with this new funding coming in and the plans that are in place.
Twenty-one four forty-five, authorized contract with Thompson Engineering for citywide bridge inspections. Forty-seven four forty-six, consider vacation of city right-of-way located on the west side of Noah Drive, just north of Medical Park Drive.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Reynolds.
We held this over last weekday, the fifteenth. It was already held over last week by way of our vote.
All right, I'll remove it.
Okay.
Consent resolutions being introduced. Zero nine four forty-eight, transfer funds from District Two discretionary account to Parks and Recreation Seals multipurpose room account for Rock of Faith Missionary Baptist Church Anniversary Tea. Thirty-seven four forty-nine, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail liquor license to Callahan's Irish Social Club on Marine Street. Forty-four fifty through four fifty-five are declaring the structures public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Fifty-eight four fifty-six, assess cost for removal of weeds, repeat weed lane group number eighty-four. Sixty four fifty-seven and four fifty-eight are approving award of special bonus for the Officer of the Month, both, one is January and one is February. Sixty four fifty-nine, four sixty and four sixty-one are determining appropriations to Gulf Coast Caribbean Carnival Association, Cresview Community Action Group, and University of South Alabama Jag Girls Serve a Public Purpose and Approved Payment. Zero three four seventy-five, appoint Robert Adam Bucky Thomas, Freddie Stokes, and R. Jeffrey Perloff as part-time Mobile Municipal Court Judges. CIP resolutions being introduced. Twenty-one four seventy-three, authorized con-
Mem's Park?
Yes. Authorized contract with Harris Contracting Services for Mem's Park Athletic Restroom slash Concession, one million one hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. Resolutions being introduced. Zero one four sixty-two, authorized amendment to agreement with Four Moons LLC for federal reporting software increase not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. Zero one four sixty-three, authorized reimbursable agreement with Moss for Dolphin Street from Spring Hill Memorial Hospital to Sage Avenue, two hundred forty-four thousand one hundred dollars. Zero eight four sixty-four through four sixty-nine are approving purchase orders to Coastal Alabama Community College for EMS and paramedic classes, twenty-five thousand three hundred thirty-one dollars, to Gray Bar Electric Company for streetlight poles for Village of Spring Hill, twenty-two thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty-five cents, to Sunbelt Fire for fire bunker gear and helmets for the fire department, sixty-seven thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars, to University of South Alabama for EMT certification courses for the fire department, forty thousand dollars, to University of South Alabama for advanced EMT courses for the fire department, thirty-eight thousand four hundred seventy-one dollars, and to the University of South Alabama for paramedic courses for the fire department, twenty-six thousand six hundred ninety-eight dollars. Zero nine four seventy, transfer funds from facility maintenance capital account to Capital Project Energy Efficiency and Conservation to match and support the fiscal year twenty-four Energy Efficiency and Conservation's block grant, one hundred twenty thousand dollars.
What is, is this part of the emergency shelter program that we do every year? I didn't see that in the booklet.
Two chillers replaced on the History Museum, and so this is a partial, partial of that. Both units are about three hundred thousand dollars each.
I saw block grant, and it took me somewhere else. So it's not anything dealing with CBG, is it?
No.
Okay.
Have you finished, Lana? Okay, Joel?
I'll just let her finish.
Okay. Thirteen four seventy-one, authorized change order with geotechnical engineering testing for Mobile Civic Center Master Plan Improvement, forty-five thousand dollar increase. Twenty-one four seventy-two, authorized contract with Jaguar Consulting for Gulf Coast Explorer H vac upgrades, twenty thousand six hundred dollars. Thirty-one four seventy-four, authorize the mayor to accept from the Alabama Department of Transportation a fiscal year twenty-five transportation alternatives set aside program grant for sidewalk improvements along Old Shell Road.
Mr. Digs?
Do we want to, these, these, all these that are under fifty thousand dollars, do we want to go ahead and take them up today?
There are a number of them that are under fifty thousand. Is everybody okay with waiving the rules and moving forward on these?
That's fine. I hear them.
What about thirty-one four seventy-four? It's a grant, but the only money coming from the city is the the match.
I think that's-
Forty-six thousand.
Yeah.
Do that one, too?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. There's a bunch that we can get taken care of today, then.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn?
Thirty-one four seventy-four, Nick, do we know where those improvements along Old Shell Road would be?
Now, this is some matching money that Mr. Daves, the mayor, providing.
Announcements?
Anybody with announcements? Uh, Mr. Penn?
Madam Vice President, I'd just like to give a big shout out. This past weekend, we had the Trenton Gardens Parade, Heritage Parade in District One, and the service that the Mobile Police Department provided, the Fire Department. And I just want to just give a major shout outs to Public Works. How they clean up is just, it's just, it's just amazing. After the parade, we have so many floats, so many great throws, but it it kind of, it's a mess afterwards. And 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 when I go, when I went back and just checked the neighborhood, it was just so beautiful. So just shout out to all the departments. They did an amazing job. So thank you for your service, because I know this past carnival season just was a lot, worked every day. And to close it out, I really appreciate it, and the community does as well.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, ma'am. I want to take the opportunity here, now we're talking about, you know, Mardi Gras being done and the mess it makes, obviously, but it gets cleaned up very well. I've been noticing that we've got a fairly significant litter problem that continues to rear its ugly head throughout my district and Tillman's Corner area. And it and it comes from a various number of reasons, as we all know. But I think we need to pay attention to some some of these areas a little bit more closely because it it, I get calls about it all the time, and I don't really have a good answer for them. You know, what 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 you can do, or what resources we are really putting out there to address it. But, you know, and then the accampments that pop up, you know, they create quite the the mess. And a lot of it is on private property. But I think I think the government has the right or ability to access private property to abate some public nuisance, especially if they're, say, you know, tearing fence boards off of a fence and creating fires, or, you know. I I think we have that that ability to at least levy some sort of penalty on these property owners who are allowing it to happen, or they're out of town, or whatever it is. And I just wanted to bring it to everybody's forefront again here that I think we need to revisit it again in some of these areas to try to address it. And and specifically, I got a call yesterday regarding some Public Works folks that were out cleaning up, or not cleaning up, they're making some repairs somewhere, and, you know, some trash was fly flying out of their vehicle. And, you know, all of our employees that that are out there, I think it's important that we, if we see something, we say something, we report it, because they're the ones going through neighborhoods and are making their affairs that, or if they see litter, or, you know, they pick it up, because it it makes it, every little bit makes a difference. So I know this has been a a problem for our city for a long time. I think it's just time we, you know, level up again. Let's deploy the crews and get them out there, and let's get it square now that Mardi Gras is done. So that's it.
Mr. Woods?
Thank you. And I'd, I kind of just to piggyback on Councilman Reynolds. The bit, one of the biggest issues that I've been hearing about the past couple of days is is signs on poles, whether that's a company advertising cleaning your yard or windshield repair, that in District Six, and I know leaking in District Four and even in the Seven, that's been a big issue. I've just resorted to stopping and pulling them down myself. But again, there's no way that I can give tickets or I can follow up on it. It just really just gets it out of sight. But who's to say in a week they don't come back and put them back up? But I think that's one. And I did want to ask Mr. Lasky, too. I know that he stepped out. This weekend, we had two pretty bad accidents on Cottage Hill Road. And I was gonna send, told my constituents that I would do this, but I'm I'm gonna send an email to to you in chief to ask possibly if if we might could, I know we we, about six months ago, y'all did a pretty big, and the police officer did a pretty big push on speed on Cottage Hill. But I had several people reach out about the two pretty bad accidents this weekend. Just want to see if that, just kind of raise it up on your priority list and see if we can do some speed enforcement through there. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other council members? Were you going to speak about the signs on poles?
Yeah.
Because I'm one of the ones that has been sending in photos, and they're really getting pretty brazen about taking their ladders out in the middle of intersections and hammering up signs. I mean, all kinds of signs, all illegal. And I have a lot of people in my district who go around and pull them down as best they can. But when it comes to somebody using a ladder to put them up, you know, nobody can do that unless they're carrying around a ladder themselves.
Right. So Public Works went out and rode some of the corridors and started taking down all these signs. You're right. They've now resorted to going real high so that people can't get to them. And so we're using bucket trucks and ladders in order to get them down. There is notice of violations. We're getting with David Dauphin Ball. These companies that these signs belong to, that are advertising, will be receiving notices of the violations in the right of way.
Do you know if these companies are local or are they from out of town? I mean?
I think the ones I saw were local.
Local? Okay, anybody?
I've got a suggestion on this. I mean, it'd be y'all's prerogative, but to to create some sort of executive order to all the city employees empowering them or giving them authority. If you see a sign, pull it down, whatever your job is, whether you're, you know, in Public Works or city engineering or whatever, if you see a sign empowering them to, as they go out in the city, pull it down.
And certainly, if they see anyone putting up these signs, because I had residents who saw people with ladders putting them up, and they stopped and said something. But of course, the the guys that were putting up the signs turned around and said something very nasty to the people who saw them, and you don't want to get into some kind of a confrontation.
We're also working with our contractors that cut that mower right of ways to treat it as litter.
Yeah.
And so to remove it as they go around the city as well.
Anybody else? William?
Well, this is totally going towards our ten-thirty meeting. But so that the rest of the council and administration, and blindsided, I asked that we suspend the rules and allow the Transit Authority to speak to us today about the, this morning's immediate blue flu that's happened. If you don't know, my district takes a major hit when there is no bus transportation, especially if it's Broad Street or the Plateau Bridget Corridor. Those people or that area of my district, there's limited transportation. People need to go to the doctor, people want oxygen, all sorts of things, and they need the buses to run. So I I understand our only leverage here is the contract that we have with the Transit Authority. But however, our contract with the Transit Authority is extreme leverage, because it's a ten million dollar contract. So I want to hear this morning how we can help to get this to the table, to get it resolved. Because a lot of you that were not on the council, Ben, Corey, Joel, when the routes were cut by this council in oh-five, and again, in other, in subsequent years, it really hurt my part of the city and my district because of ridership, even though it was low. Most people that ride the buses come from District Two, District and District One, I believe, when it when it was, when we really did the study. Those are where the riders actually come from. So we really need to hear what's going on, and actually from both sides. And I'm I'm thankful that we're gonna allow that to happen this morning to see what we can do to actually help get them to the table to get this resolved.
Before we move forward, Mr. Woods, were you able to, or was it the Chief of Staff to contact the management? Okay, all right. Mr. Daves?
As long as, as long as both the management and the speakers for the union are here and both have an opportunity to speak, I'm fine with waiving the rule. I I want to correct, no, that's not true. I'm not correcting, misunderstanding. I just want to make a statement. Ten years or so ago, Councilman Richardson, Councilman Manzi and I took a road trip. And we went to Montgomery, we went to Birmingham, we went to Huntsville. And the purpose of that road trip was to look at public transportation systems in our sister cities in Alabama, how they did it, how much they spent, that kind of thing. Now, Birmingham's different, because it's a metropolitan transit system, and municipalities and the county all participate in it. So the the closest to our system were Montgomery and Huntsville. And I'll tell you this, that at that time, Mobile was spending significantly more than either Montgomery or Huntsville on a per capita basis for public transportation. So I think we need to keep that in mind as we go forward. Thank you.
Mr. Penn?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And I just want to join in with my colleague, Councilman Carroll. When I got the news hearing about what's taking place, I agree. I think we, I'm glad, and Chief, did you say he he is able, he will be here? That's what you stated? Okay. I'm glad that that their administration is coming. I'm glad to have the the staff here as well. We need to know what's taking place at the wave system, because this is affecting a lot of people in my district. And I understand that a lot of times when we have transportation, it's easy for us to get in our vehicles and our cars and drive. But there's a lot of people that don't have that benefit, and they need these resources. And we want to make sure that they have the resources to get to the place to work, to places, to to their doctor appointments. And it's vital. And and we need to support our constituents in in this matter. And so I'm I'm glad that we're able to listen here and make sure that they're getting the resources needed to provide this service. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Mr. Carroll?
Again, it's not about how much money we're putting into the transit system right now. It's about service to the people. And we cannot allow for there not to be service to the people that really need Transit Authority right now. And I understand more than anyone, I think, because when we went through this study the last time about ridership and how much we spent in pro-rata share compared to the other municipalities, what the deficit we were looking at with the transit system. I think I was the chair of the Finance Committee when we did this. And I understand the resources and money that we lay into this, as Councilman Joel Dave said. But however, at this moment in time, it's more about service to the constituents in this city than it is about the amount of money that we're currently putting in.
So we will need to waive the rules in order to allow both sides to speak, or do we not? Just? Yeah. So we don't, we don't have to do anything officially? Yeah, I I think that's the thing. You know, we are in a business meeting. This is not a negotiation forum for either side. I think our, what we do today is give both sides a chance to state their case in hopes of bringing them to the table to negotiate. We are not negotiating today. We are listening. So is it a three-minute minimum, like we give everybody else? I mean, you still will have an opportunity to ask questions if you so choose.
I think we follow the same guidelines.
Same guidelines, okay.
And if any council members have questions- And if any council members have questions, then we can move on from there.
Right, okay. But let's not give anybody the impression that we are negotiating anything today, we are simply listening.
Yeah, legally, we can't.
Well, exactly. We don't want anybody to get the wrong impression.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, sir.
The rule that would, we would be waiving would be to allow someone to speak on a non-agenda item.
Right.
Making that request without having to sign the day of. This is a, you know, I don't think this is a good idea, I don't think it's a good precedent. I understand we've got people down here that came down to speak, but, you know, I just don't think it's a, it's a great precedent to be setting. You know, I'd be willing to defer, you know, on this, this one here, but it's just not a good idea to make this a routine of how we conduct our business, where this is a slippery slope, and I just, you know, want that to be known.
How many speakers on each side?
I think it's just one on each side, is it not?
I think one speaker on each side is plenty for today, and I would agree with Mr. Reynolds, we don't want to start setting precedents. However, there are cases, and we can take them issue by issue, case by case, and make these decisions. And with the fact that something has been happening in our city today, I think it's well within our purview to make that decision today to let both sides speak. Mr. Woods?
I think the interruption of public transportation services is sufficiently egregious to go ahead and waive.
Yes. Mr. Woods?
I wanted to make sure that we didn't forget about the executive session.
Right, right. We were just finishing up this. And anybody else? All right, we have been asked to go into executive session. Mr. Woods?
My name is Ricardo Woods, I'm the city attorney for City Mobile, I'm licensed to practice in the state of Alabama. Madam Vice President, I'm asking that you conduct a roll call vote to go into executive session to discuss considerations for this government body and its willingness to offer and accept and consider the purchase, sale, exchange, or lease of a particular property.
So moved.
And lastly, we reconvene at 10:30.
So moved.
All in favor, Ms. Roll Call? Vice President Gregory?
Yes.
Councilmember Penn?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Yeah, and if we could get everyone to go ahead and file on out, because we're running a little late, and we want to make the meeting by 10:30.